Mergidrogui, ilita sils le gorgai vice president senator Ludim, ma flo leader Gray Mariur, Marbec Lad, po du litial ngi amomone del sils, re el altogubets lon dibergid, ra sixteen special session el mora order. Clergam, warol kol.
Senator Vechis Agitaya?
Oi.
Senator Kamsek Eliastin?
Oi.
Senator Rukbaigik Woinabo?
Oi.
Senator Stevenson Chek Quarte?
Oi.
Senator Frank Kiota?
Martin.
Senator Aric M Nakamura?
Oi.
Senator Philip Paul Reclay?
Oi.
Senator Che Udu Samau Senyor?
Oi.
Senator Chan Biskabong? Senator Mesorni Erbanalwips?
Oi.
Flo leader Gray Mariur?
Oi.
Vice President Mark Eblaw Ludim?
Oi.
President Hokons Paulis?
Oi.
Mister President Tania Khorum?
Tania Khorum don tira flo leader Senator Mariur, bol non tigai gergid rau reled, Senator Mariur.
So la presidenta ilita sils el mergau Marbecel senator, se bodolmum rau reled madobora item four galender, akmubadatra sel secondary journal ra sixteen special session.
Sinam motion namdu ngeseeg, nomtirgirrogui il gongeldu oi, om tok. Namai, flo leader.
Bodolmum represente item five, ma regel komunikation la presidentel may, ma regel presidential communication ten das three six one, tiang appointment tra mister Alan Timarbo, in mo dalap PVA board of directors. Tiang regel presidential communication ten das three six two, re appointment tra trigel mo dalal national development bank, in mutun mora se gidel. Tiang regel regel presidential communication ten das three six three, appointment tra mister Leslie Gibbons? A voset wises e presidenta?
Sertwises. Nomor order, flo leader.
Presidenta madodemnara gide presidential communication, ma regel gide sel presidential communication ten das three six two, se appointment tra trigel mo dalal national development board, national development bank. Regel ngi aberdil, abey ma Ranf Moses, adro te wana katta, manansi wong. Tiang regel dubora Prescam ten das three six three, tiang regel appointment tra mister Leslie Gibbons Teewith, in mo dalal Palau election board. Gide ma regel presidential communication, maktilnitra weka ludim notum, madobora sel appropriate partakal in der godomis. Edobora item six ra reporter na departmental may, ma regel ngi departmental communication ten das seventy five, tiang ra sel reporter sel cross act ra mandra augusto. Dubora a seven ra yel komunikation na ra house el may, ma regel ngi sel komunikation ra house communication ten das two five eight, ta tiang ra ta na gonge rau reled sel house bill ten das one sixteen, das eleven HD one, na rogir rau reled, aduruklin mel po da consider ngi la senet. Tiang regel ngi house communication ten das two five nine, girela trigel ngi house joint resolution ten das six nine, das sixteen S. Tiang regel bol consider, po da consider ngi. Tiang regel ngi house communication ten das two sixty, na kutmok la rau reled, sel senate bill ten das one eighty one, ST one, lobengela HD one, aduruklin may, ma se tiang regel po da consider ngi ra elam. Gide komunikation na ra sel Vital Blain may, dubora item eight tra standing committee report, sen tiang regel ngi, dubora item nine tra reports ra special committee, tiang regel diak. Dubora order of the day, item ten, ndiak regel ngi, dubora item eleven ra vil galender, ngi ngara first reading, maqmubadpas ra house bill ten das one sixteen, das eleven HD one, rautlum even.
Sinam motion namdu ngeseeg, ma clergam iwataiton.
House bill number ten das one sixteen, das eleven HD one. Will for now to amend chapters one, four and seven of title fifteen of the Palau National Code, Palau National Telecommunication Act of 2017, to exempt PNC from universal access levy and extend the moratorium and establishment of new telecommunication service companies until January first, 2020. Tiang regel somola, dimmumlo da ra chapters one, four, ma seven ra title fifteen, sel masa girela telecommunication act ra 2017, ma exempt ra PNC seal universal access levy, ma tiang regel mo extend da sel moratorium ra besel telegam luchu baral sel abru bela until ra January first, 2020. Tiang regel somola, akmitos, ngi atakal deli etan noa kamson.
Tania shual meka kamenta, senator. Inabo.
Komso la ngi presidenta, tiel house bill number ten das one sixteen, das one eleven, mister presidenta timo orulima ndiakado open ra telegam market almo 2020. Mutam sati allala PNC seal aldebelop ra infrastructure ngi ma oradiya market. Torondas wasel al COVID-19, eng la angil time, alda lutansan te alla PNC seal, ma pulsab el al kutmakli, el pulsab el al al compete with McLeod foreign companies el mitmura as la telegam market. Se gidel te alla lolngitaringi. Tiang regel lolngitalwasi al pulsab edel al meerey malakal pe gile universal fees, gide gide bol olaval pe sel RUS loan, lekavalmenta, tiang regel al bol lo mu al mangadar sel RUS loan, al engil alla, eng negirela PNC seal pe gide universal fees, el morsel Bureau of Communications, ya Bureau of Communications amongera al pe gide or se gidel RUS loana PNC seal. Mang disegida te alla ngarteluldas el molla, eh, mister presidenta ma te waisi olngit, tambo da qad si ter ringi, ngi dungra first reading. Solange, mister president.
Solange, senator Inabo. Tania ogdol kamenta.
Qodogir.
Senator Mariur.
Qodogir ra senator Inabo ra ora ukwal ora amadatra tuqora komunikation, estegidel Bureau ra komunikation sel regulation me girel moru ringi, ngi ngarriya qwanamutmok le may aluven, tiang regel diak.
Senator Inabo.
Mister presidenta tiang regel tiang regel lowaiser gide lvasing astaru ser sel regulations. Odim dangir sera dorur sel gaming bilya committee al lisa babierel mora Bureau of Communications, lo gire ringil vasing pulsab el monitor telegaming industry, lulture yeklisi el marsel mleululdas el molla. Tamle luusia babierel may lowaiser kula se tori ortir ma ADB, el lo meo bar se gide regulations. Tamla point tra besel director ngi, ma ta moru se gide regulations, se tiang regel bol kutmakli mo implement ringi. Se gide alastel el communication from the Bureau of Communications. Mang I hope eng pulsab elmo orior se gide regulations, sel et ngarriya wala kuqora advisor sa ADB, lulungse ortil girela omio bar ringi. Solang ra, karimi, flo leader.
Senator Plight.
So la presidenta malu ilita sils el wargau mar, bekel senators. Akdiso alogir ra chairman Inabo lvasing, ngaram gada mo moroba additional frequency ra ratio radio. Wa dekisa amo ulitegide additional frequency ra radio mo affect ra audo del mora Bureau sumadregal PNC seal. Anyway, eng ndiak regel seril olo entegre landing, ngil bol omisengire, eng wa dekak understand, ma singaram gada mo kuqinkuda radio edakal, nisessiring man mo ngari impact ringi tegidel losa deli. Solange.
Tania ogdol kamenta.
Sen tiu.
Suom ndiak etirgirrogui il gonge, tiel uldas el molla, rautlum even du oi. Om tok. Namai, assign el mora committee ra senator Inabo, ma regel ngi kuestion maluven kamenta, komo darsel mori. Senator Mariur, flo leader.
No se, presidenta imolbil na first reading, edak regel second reading, edobora third reading. Maqmub bol seridel gonge sel HD one ra sel senate bill ten das one eighty one, ST one, HD one. Pulseridel repas ringi lobengela HD one.
Clergam iwataiton.
Senate bill number ten das one eighty one, ST one, HD one. Will for now to amend the fiscal year 2020 budget act to provide the national scholarship board with funding flexibility and to authorize an appropriate funds for the January 2021 inauguration activities and programs. To enact a continuing budget authority for all regular budget activities of the national government, including supplemental social security benefit payments and for other various purposes. Tiang regel uldas somola, dimmumlo da ra yosa ang ra 2020, morulima sel national scholarship board almoni ati allala flexibilita wududel. Tiang regel mo ultobda wudud, girela inauguration activity ma program ra sel mleul mil January 2021. Tiang regel mo matmok ra continuing budget authority, girela girel regular budget activities of the national government, edo tiang regel mo ultobda wudud el morsel social security benefit payment. Tiang regel uldas somola, utta datakal da itor rau rela, tam iir ma ksauchunyol.
Tania kamenta irabodu sen tiu. Senator Vice President Ludim.
Presidenta, ra agulmal nekulmitra sertwises.
Sertwises. Ogdol gada ngia session el mora order. Flo leader.
Presidenta, gada nga discussion tegidel bill nga third reading tal senate bill ten das one eighty one. Discussion ringi ra iraboda disay del girel. Tomsat i alla, chairman.
Gide gada nga discussion, ma bodopsate lela chairman Mark Ludim, bol buskidha omso del tiel uldasul molla. Senator Ludim.
Oi. Malmsaule, mister presidenta malu ilita sils. Mister presidenta, tiang ra sel senate bill number ten das one eighty one, ST one, lulduluklin mora house. Ma house amlo omes ringi, emlo laudaswir lila committee report ringi, ewdoruklin may lobengela HD one. Mister presidenta, tiya a house amlo odiil. Gakulngitra al adro meso tiang e, mister president. Lolngitra adra bulu, tiang regel bol esasel session ra house en mil d'tmokre elil September nine. El reng satgi ngi ra adra house rogui, ma gyal omso dir mortelomal de lteul dasul molla. Et tiang uldasul molla alulduluklia president, lolngitra continuing budget authority, el mosohis barra fiscal year 2021. Esere alme, mister president, tegidamlo odiil, emlo ochensa o'ul, gada mlo omot a o'ul. Ah, basicli wat a senet agitmakli, amlo malas, emlo mso grabebi ra agencies, el domdas a gire program, somdas a se onspia adra bela. Monga domlo malas, fifteen percent ra Ministry of Finance, Ministry of State, ma Ministry of Cultural Affairs, ma MPI IC, ma Ministry of Natural Resources, Environment and Tourism. Emlo mas a five percent ra Ministry of Health, ma Ministry of Education, ma Ministry of Justice, ma Judiciari. Edo ik emlo mas a fifteen percent ra olbi raglulaw, ma independent agencies, ma state block grants. Gide wudud e, mister presidenta, daitan ra eight point eight million. Gada lolavolo ola pension plan, tegel beneficiaries, ma social security, ma sapsidil mora PPUC. Gide les chief service pension plan e, mister president, tegel madengi roguk, ma sen tiang ra operate on a deficit, ra daitan three point eight billion rau rekarak. Na lagdum reegdul sobakli, ensabi el mor close, ol imode akla adra lusa beneficiary serti. Ma onyerung setuka SSA, ai liak, gide guko sisu bela wudud el mors SSA, il dolbi raglulaw, ma presidenta mlotmag ermula la, loltobda omsangela wai, ai gide monthly benefits el morte gal beneficiary sel SSA. Esen mora PPUC, disapsidil mol naser orela PPUC, naser al adra bulu. Mister presidenta, un makdomo mention ra house, legada tmalaloreol. Untobda tiang e motmora house. Ngarriya adro lemese session, ewlengit la se. Tiang regel gisange, mister president, ndiawlengit a se dibom serakli a senet rau reled. Wasin, ndiakal moktega la senet, andra kame triga mister president, tegidrogul madengi wasin, ndiakal swad, gida dekado usagor, ma uga domorua klo gole, de dolduro klo rela, ma Vital Blain. Undaseng moktega gide amras, lamgadas e, emutmok la ngilla, indomdas a se onspia omil al adra bulu, ta oldilakuma bitang, etukmal a imoril audaswir, gada maregri. Ma tiang regel tang e, mister presidenta, ngal maas seral gadaong, ermula wasin, gada regel molngitra president ra senet, ma arubugul tiel blain, mukrol al adra tiel blain, wasin, kelle lo ngil bo da exercise a proper degoru ra tuqora al d'adu. Ma ler adraloreng se, mister presidenta, maas ma arubaga marangala. Masel guko dol tuba tarabla, magalakpe lak dosa dra isiu mister presidenteng, ngal maas lomgadaong, a se ongil a d'samakli, la bol mukitarela al adale. Gida ngartang e, mister presidenta, undas ra adra regel ulsumo, ra gide guklan ngarriyin metodo, eme olndar se gide guko d'suwir ma a imoril morteluriol buai. Ndisoakal kungu se gide mister president, lolngitra leader si virgal wasin, alsum gada mogdula adra Vital Blain. Eakulngitra sel eklulol adra, ma seklo bela al gide, bol bol ngani se lo ngil d'adu, ebodosa d'atol gir al adra bulu, balawadu ma sala a idai, edi iteuriol ngarmadad. Mister presidenta, ya adra house amlo raise ra isiu ra constitutionality, ra tuqora wutmalala. Ya sel arigal twelve ra section three, ah, ngara ba, se gida ngara bazsa wutmalala. If sel bazsa ngara wutmalala akmog, a presidenta mo otobdi ra rekarak, a arru ollyosan ra bulu belaw, el moro olbi raglulaw. El bolomdas we gonge ringi. Ya olbi raglulaw, ah ngarriya aklisi el, il ngodi itielyosan, loltobda ringi a presidenta, rau rekarak. A olbi raglulaw, adiak aklisi el morula ngidi luldasul molla, il girela wudud. Alswum, ngi adiak loltobda ringi a president, il girela amaregde d'togoi, ma l'uben girela rau reled olbi raglulaw, il dimrakmol gatmakli al la, il girel tielyosan. Sel l'agatmakli al adra house e, mister presidenta, challenge ra constitutionality, al gitmakli a senet. Ndigidet tiang e, mister president, nuh du adra la al gide. Ah, omso del sel guko morse gide l'olgorngil wasin, ki da adra la al gide. Omso dir ngidet ngartang omral wasin, ki da ngara aoltaw tra aklisi el olbi raglulaw, iswe edel momolod. Al'ulula yosan ra bulu belaw, lokiwa wutmalala, le presidenta, adiakal iswe el magaran, al la al tobda la al tiel blain. Itegidel ngara arigal twelve, section three A. Ma undaseng ki da rogul blogamadade moru lteuluriore, mister president, il dekak moktega gide, amongil d'ra wutmalala, ma alsum gada gukmo recheck ringi ma d'adu, emongil desangal, emongil al mugatmakli budulu el, wasin wa alakte tel. Ndiga ka gro se klisi, a olbi raglulaw kutmokla la, a presidenta aoltaw. Tiang sel bodong, ewmes ringi presidenteng, lobe adamo talak, wasin damlatomalia wutmalala. Ya sel bodongui wuttiel bazsa e, mister president, mbay agundaseng mbay blaimi ta Vital Blain, el mesohis barra senet, wasin gida milla mal, ndile mal balak takak kungu wasin, a girel loltobda yosan ra rekarak a president. Mang direkum lammo koriol ra bulu bela rogil, wasin alsum dimlaklotobdi, ntatin melia wutmalala. Ya adra la al gide sel bol olgorngil, wasin akantuning budget authority, amsa d'ra budget. Mang iswe emen chensan klele, se emlo bebe eru ringi ma rogui, ndindirka budget, ndindirka yosan. Albay anhuwel, anhuwel rogui, nding yosan ra bulu belaw. Esegidal do ngi ngamitriga mister president, wasin ngarriya lamal telo kiwa wutmalala, el momolod ringi, iswe el onyengati, iswe el chensapalasi, alsel in olbi raglulaw el momalagia Vital Blain, il mey moora daitorio. Ediakal gimda aklisi la president e, mister president, ra tuqora o'ul. Le ngarriya aklisi la president, lan item ridos, aluben lan item veto, aluben ngotngukli, aluben gukmo la refer itpa, gukmo laudaswir d'tiaya system el dangar alsel. Ma kame triga omral wasin, ki dar mult ra aklisi el olbi raglulaw, lokiwa wutmalala. Mister presidenta, tiel ah, gada mal ad'adu egida mo recommenda wasin, gada mo recheck ter tiel blal gatmakla house, gada mo ad'adu, l'atrogok la gide, guko pulsab edel compromise se kutmokla. Le sel kantuning budget authority, mister presidenta bol referen seringi, ngarala, ah, dekak duk kula shang shal. Ndia kalwa isul obra wutmalala, eng wasin president shal submit an annual budget. Sel ngarriya CBA ra alla, wasin maybe enacted. L'ulak kungu wasin, alsum gada gonge yang moaisin. Mang aigadi duzongi lammo kabos adra la al bitang, multelbitang, ndi eten de mister president, alakdo besa siyagluo balwa, egida multrogok ser swademo. Oi, moriya legal differences, sel ngarriya albiro, al'ube quatriliwol alwith, engi diya momosmo klung. A presidenta, direkutanga gide tuqora o'ul. A isiu adek, a se gukilia kel isiu, ndi impact loli isiu, asel kantuning budget, ma gyal durulol nganatringi, gada madekmongarriya ngansan sella revenue, local revenue, ya source of funding atqora blalsan. Ma la kuestion el moro bodogir ngi, ma direklo ngil bodogira adra bulu akungu wasin. El altaim gada guktim baik, egada wasin oi beml mololmal mol dios isiu, emadengi kungu wasin tiang amomta'al basul ra an next year. Al'uv, egada morsel version ra senet, ya wala nganatringi, ma gada share ra burden, gada waiya da, kada kainisiu sobakli el ang, il girela aklugu. Gada ngosongesel el ang pulsab edel molmum ra klugu. Se gide ya olbada balanari la, mister presidenta, mang kleya mo isiu ra gide ma house. Nsori el molmum, egida akungu wasin ndiak, ki da madekmok tiang ral momta'al basul, kame da tlgibol onyengisikla. Ngosongesel ekal expenditure, lege wudud da dekak local revenue, tiang motuqora blalsan. Ya blan se, mister presidenta, abelsida al adra klugu, ndiakal el ang. Ergum guklega local revenue gukta ra story. Ndii, mister presidenta, tiel olangatra budget, a rengisa adetamalmo kora a set, kora malmo obegikla set tiang adigoteng makiimda, ma klo wudud ra wa, awelala, ndiakal wai se, mister president, tegidamisprengi over fifteen, la twelve months. Eh, direkut swadlo assure al adra bulu, ma our governors, ma our speakers, ma leaders, ta bulu marumte gide bulu roguk, kungu wasin, ndiakal mukstok, ndiakal mekti imal olbi raglulaw, mal entertainer, isiu any supplemental budget, alsum moriya source of revenue. Se gide ya, se ya klabakli tel system el dangar alsel. Tiang ra diowu di gal rekarak time, gida kaga isiu losi gatia al, ye kain ngaseu, nde kal bol gosok sabi bi la blu, malibet ra'ad, malibet bolu ulata, a qara te'arbasul la, ablu mar'ad. Mang, agundasun, bekal door ngito, waseng la kadralin mo qara i'merchanciel, waseng tian nga malgu ra optingle, le, qada do mesan ngi, mister president, waseng tergi bal, bekal tergi, maklul, bulmu traministra finance, ma vice president, ma president, ta, tamla admitla, waseng tian a twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, a amal momta'arbasul, le malin minis mo klongsa ngasaludawdawa bluul belau. Adirek tange, mister president, a W O A, adirek dodek ngariya, tamla tergi bal limitra disposment of funds. Ma gel nekludawdawdaw multe kanan omrekl, bu la dodek mong, chirisbla, lo giwan ngeswra, tokla, egal salidra bluul omregel ma bebi la blu. Masel sum qadumbedekmo ngariya bebi la programs, ma amgimda, ma amta'arbasul la blu, engire dal, kidal, qumda, kidal ngala senet, ta, kamiti, adirek geda lo mesasay, ngala qadumbo ngosongsa make sure, sel baakla rekl adamo. Le, klotu tule, mister president, ta bo dengar bekl adwa, say, ali tial maralmei, adirek a ta'mu dosiu kli ra galamolmei, tian a gatan il. Mang girala adal mo qarigikla. Ak direk lo ngito, mister president, waseng sum qadmo mo'udur a, a house, ye ak direk malo ngito, leader shiver gaul, waseng, ekshure temogdon aradal rogu, imtimo understandla, say, ngala ngar ngai meng, moswe dhal gukmakli tial mongil, lo spe'ag eswra, egida, ra eswrasa leader a house of delegates. Le tia gidhe, mister president, a, kamitri direk mo regomendla say, me'da rejecter ngi, ebo'd adad du, la irona utegel differences, sel gidma house, poswe dhal gukmakli amre adaluriol, gera la, yo sang ra bluul belau, sula, mister president.
Kabon ngariya, sol dirga momolol, mal, akti floli dirak. La direk lungil explain el mora buai, bo dengil, waseng ngaram qadakat tial budget. Let's say ya question, aradala blu ogel, waseng ngaram gomkata budget tra state tra fifteen percent, ngaram gomkata budget tra national government tra fifteen percent, engar nyak gel five percent, ma private school a five percent. Aige ya sorry la adala blu, el moma dengi. Mang, ndial ngarama, bo'd dispute ra, wasent a right, a wrong, aradala blu, mangal mo kanfius, me by the, mso dil, waseng ra ulak qadakat budget, ma adala blu bul understandla, atogel dorur ngi, le, seya issue, kating the budget. Ebtatela chairman. Chairman Rudim.
Man soli, mister president. Mister president, a ulm qadmo qatra budget, a, abla gatake, qulwa say, lam tamala, togora ke isayla kang godan, ma roku'togora bluul belau. Qadumbedekmo gel oya ra udawdawdaw mishois, ba lam preda ma, lamu diwus. Ma, sel source of funding, tega gidlo, luda swedak kontining budget authority, ablalsan. A ulm qadol nganatringi, mister president, a, amre ergidel girer sel, tia gidsel, sebe dhal molgoa sawade, mister president, ndib a'ua budget, enga'ontem, mo deksbeel mo gatmaklam. Mang digot lu'ula, ala P P R, amla lay offra adril, ma P R R, ma Palaisia. Seya ulm qadmo qatra budget, mister president, tega gidhe gel oya ra udawdawdaw togora tourisma, diga. E sel alternative, mister president, a togora blalsan. Seegid ya gukmo difference, egida ma adal house, waseng ngar nyak source of revenue, ma rogu, ndin, ngariya gel bebi la, taringtengi, gel loan, el bekal guarantee. Gel kuluwa, mister president, a digital balance ra budget, lo spe'agel ngar ngi, ndi there's no guarantee, waseng tian asabel waishay. Le qada direk lo mesra sel forecast, el bado la twenty two, ma twenty three. Eh, mister president, a egal, ebtogol issue, a ngala alcela F A A, sel funds availability analysis, el klor ngi, abla gatake, qulwa say, gel, womushin, gel local revenue, a diga. Tia nga, seya ulm qadakatra budget, a digital flow tra government, ma gel essential services, ye osiga te'ala, sel magala du, omregel ngansang sel tial, yo sang ra bluul belau. Sula, mister president.
Senator ngiri eban, kabon. Saurra tele, mister president, ndi aboxis persel debate tra legality ra aurelela, olbi la bluulau. Ga constitutional issue, olbi la bluulau, omral waseng ngar el el meru lala, amendala, se aurelela olbi la bluulau. Ndii, tergi bal, swagal gor'a, explain, sel agumralwa say, muldasuwek. Mal adiregal, muldasuwek, our members ra kamiti, qaswe ra chairman, a grima waseng why, why qadumru ngi, say, amla grima, mister president. Ngaga, nde kal sal, I mean, gamangala textbook, kamiti report, milsa'adra mal simple el tagoi. Eh, namu gamangala discussion, ra omralwa say, mal simple el tagoi. Eh, ngaga, a, otel swagal gor'a o'arts, mandilungile, gu otia gor'a arts, il black valley. Ra omralwa say, la, sel tergi bal, moswe ra discussion, ma understanding ra adala blu, waseng, ngar ulu, ngaga gukwaishew dasuwek. Eng, nda wonge, setian, sel mutui ra camera, ndii, a, a korali, se agiril, bavier. Hmm, bekal, titulos, a powerpoint, mister president, meru ra, a graph, mal mongi. Mang, it's simple, sel muldasuwek la senate, a waseng me, me dolas, mer widus, ras spending, egid, mal gor'a motelgi bal gradual, tial situation, el dangar alcel. And I'll explain the numbers later. Sel guk, muldasuwek, office of president, ma la house of delegates. Eh, maybe I'm wrong, ndi sel guk understanding, ra, qandswal dim gata krisi say, asa, ndi dhol mol, ndi what happens when you get to twenty twenty two? Tia gidha, ak madaktengi, mister president. Qalela, kal se edhal wa di, mgeko gidhal kat, qale di dengi, qadumuriyom, that's what could happen. Ak silodira, a session, ergidhe, sel dangar adurd reading, il waseng, you know, we're looking at a fifteen percent cut in some ministries, in state governments, and, and other boards, and commissions, and so forth, and five percent in others. Le gidol omralwa say, ngar nyak gel, priority areas, il girer dal, tergi bal, meri nga egida widus. Sel, sel madaktengi, sel madaktengi. Adol mol, mer tial spending, el dangar ngire la ang, status quo, mongila ya ang. What happens when we get to next year, this very day? Ter gel ngal tangan, el mora alcel, obira bluulau. Qale bol la ka choice, eti, le, qada namel sidel meri ikled, diga udawdaw, qada naqniem, da egal dun mal, sel gidhal malai. Modhe ka choice, maybe we'll have to do a thirty percent cut, a forty percent cut, a fifty percent cut. A problem, mer tial situation, el dangar alcel, ndeak do dengi. You, a gel do dengi, aigad gid, qada na'wa twenty million, out of the sixty million. Qada direk, narmin, sra minister, waseng, we can get another twenty million. Akmo qada introduos, a, aigad gid, bebi la, la sumola. Ndii sel guk, remaining twenty million, a contingent on if we are, wa president, egid, signs them into law. Mang, aigangar nyak, a wall or rega, nde kal guarantee, waseng qadumai gal udawdaw, nde kal guarantee. Eh, mang, seegid a gor'a klul, severa kren, el ngar arngoku, ma, I hoping, to understand, ngar adala blu, I'm just speaking for myself. Ling, sel bekal do dengi, la klugu, gergid, ndin ngar nyak, egel guk do dengi, el la'da take action, se gu omralwa say, nde service, el mora adal domte'ekti. Ngar nyak blad esang, el mata'arbasul, edi, lamda'da take action, ye osi ere, edopi ilmon, ere bol ngar el el tirgel, mangal tangan, el mero, o'truy, matal government, bol ngar el il. Nding se edhal, waseng, ere di do, magal, el diklu, ere el al time, el asum, waseng muya tangeth, ndii sel siswa, anexel government, ta ba amlay, mang, ere di da para, ngi guk. Seegid a qbagi kergi, mister president, ngaga, di blo, magal, el speedo, ndii, ak madengi, lo se, sel speedo, eh, malmo, malu, otial mlik. Ndii summa, ak mosoro, la se, egal tergi bal, ma aroy. Al summa, qadummosoro, la se, edhal tergi bal, ma aroy. Seegid a omra, say, malbiot, lo, mosode, la position, ngak, mer members ra kamiti, ma tige, mesen kyo, yes, eti. Eh, altang momkitarandir, ar galiksir ngak, ngara house of delegates. Our governors, sel omte'egal, belwa, ma speakers, ndi lamla, lo, summe, ndi omralwa say, tada direk, omdasul waishay. Ndii gidha, amdengi, la problem, el dangar alcel, gidha ngara alcel, abluul belau, qadummasang, gidha omesan news, gidha amdengi, waseng, qadumma, omal, sel gid, ye ore di, qadummal, sel gid. Ya bebi ra, irons, la lotovda, house of delegates, tial version, etira, edi swagal touch. Do tabdi a pension plan, le, om salwa, waseng, a pension plan, amomlar, ten million alone, nde kal belgula, do sa'ad ringi. Qada direk, lo, tabdi, sel ngasun, mora P U C, le, om salwa, waseng, a P U C, momlar, ten million alone. Mahal, edikri, kia, pa blal, sel do sa'ad, mister president, bo'la gata. Qadengi lo, fifteen million, el disaster relief, which we have to pay back from A D B. We got twenty million, ore di gova, which we have to pay back. We have twenty million, based on, akmo qada introduos, a, la sumola, ah, eh, direk ngani, sel last possible twenty million, akmo egel luda swam alla, ma do dakta, aige roguing seventy five million. Then, let's add P U C, ten million, eighty five million now. Let's add pension plan, ten million, ninety five million now. Mang, ndi, tial situation, el dangar alcel, ye qadumsa'adra ninety five million. Esab edhal, waseng, oh, ndeak, aige bal sela, a P U C, oh, ndeak, aige bal sela pension, abel sela P U C, ma abel sela pension, abel set. Aigad, aigad part, tial government, el dangar alcel. So, aduwa problem, el ori di, tial, uh, continue, continuing budget authority, or whatever it's called, it's still our problem. Ndir gaval set, ndeak, a di isir ngi. Ma, mister president, qadim, meswag al clarify, gel, issues, ngaga guk komis. Qas, ebo'd, tergi bal, gregikla, ebo'd, soror amli'ith, mang, se edhal, ma aroy, adidaklu, ye qadumol, ingora, melengil omra. Mal mosaura, te'al, mister president. Sula, senitor ngiri eban, no. Digang, qadummosen kyo, senator Kiotan.
President, ta, alwi, la sil sil mergau, ora, tanganal, vice president, egida, senator Mark Mudim. Floli dira, egida, tanganal, senator Gray Mariur, mar bekel senator. Mister president, a, mo, olmu'tel, reitera, a position, ngak, di wasira, ulera, ak sen kyo, nor a H T one, emo sen kyo, yes, tial H T one. Ra, di alnora, mister president, sirad qutro, mu'ul masadra, tial, continuing budget authority, almei. Eng ble, gatacla minister, tanganal, el bu'ul sadang, dirul gidhal, waseng, nde kal, ol sisbla, pension plan, ma P P U C, ngariya aurul marari. Egida, omulme, emorgong, eh, eh, e katta, aigad, ebtogol budget, lo si ga udawdawdaw, malas, mer, el fandra, a pension plan, ma P P U C. Ma gel time, ra, do'ugun, ben mu'tra, el al sil, say, mister president, ak bilomol, mer, lo dingri, gila, aigad gid, el togora, aurior. Eng, bilomol, lo aishan, ngalwa say, ngariya aurior marai, nding, meswag, mer la, bavier, lo aisho, say, marai, ngariya aurul, ndeak. Bol mu'ter al sil, say, mister president, ngariya, information, aigao timder, ngak, dira qabol, eh, official, bavinga, minister, mer, meri, olbi la bluulau. Alsum, ndi lungil, basul, anse, egal, se, es information for us. Girer sel, el, ngasun, mora, P U C, mister president, ya, ler, le say, ngariya, ambassador, Taiwan, Republic of China, satsuray, doriwana twenty twenty. El mer, mister sadang, lo aishingi, girer sel, bavinga, tun two, a twenty twenty, blor ngi, ndirul, waseng. In response to your letter, dated tun two, a twenty twenty, regarding redirection of the requested Palau P P U C capital investment financing to Palau Civil, uh, Pension Trust Fund, I am pleased to inform you that R O C government has agreed to coordinate with Mega International Commercial Bank, to offer a soft loan to Republic of Palau in the amount of ten million, with the term of twenty years, at six months live or plus one percent interest rate, and four three year grace period. Seegid, sel, lurior, miral, girer tegid, togora. Osisurtan, mister president, eng, ngak, pira, M O U, le say, ngi, eh, li, lo bangela, A D B, girer sel, egal a P U C. Ma September, dorin, mori nga sel, staff review meeting, loan negotiations, omor October seven, board approval, a December seven, loan signing, a December seventeen, a loan effectiveness, a December twenty. Aige gidhe, mister president, a, amle urululgo, otanganal, minister, el bu'ul sadang, il gira, aige gidhal, tablool, specific items, semadum, dimi, kal, otul, tial, continuing budget authority. Mang, emorgong, eng, egadungulme, mori nga, reduction, ngi, aladum, qadumlosoish, aigad gidhal, ebtogol, legal opinion, se la qadumsa'ad. Direk sel, report, tanganal, chairman, arawishelmin, senitor Mudim. Ndirek, lo, olto, waseng ngar nyak, gel, girer dal, compliance, moswe edhal, ma gel, ngusel, rogi, sixty million, tokuni, sel seken, ma doldawdawdaw twenty million. Aige, mister president, axuling, mongil, la government, belau, axuling, ruli, belau, mo, mongil, basul, alcela, a tial, eh, global community, gidha, member, ye, access, aigad, financial assistance. In fact, ne pasala, algo ngi, la president, momo'ling, udawdaw, up to sixty million. Aon, aige, eh, policy decision, gidhal, mo'kri, way, a, a tax reform, sel a ito, oygen, tilobda, tra udawdawdaw, alga, tax reform, emlo, bekal may. Diga aige, di aurul, lamu ul girer tia. Mang, aigad bekal, meri ngi, aigad, se edhal, gukmo'lam, cha, save the political will to do it. Edirek, sel, matamala, klagan godan, mer giat, tial P P F, ndiga, aroli, ergid, mengidhal, lo si ga udawdawdaw, me, lo ya galo, ne, mo'kmo'la, aigad gidhal, lurior, ngak, omes, aigad, mister president, na, selin, mal blal. Aigad, investment, meri blu, meri livelihood, ra'ad, meri employment, meri ra'ad, adu belau. In fact, eng, mal gamangala grace period, eh, within those grace period, ndi se edhal, gukmo'la, aigad gidhal, el, luray edhal, mostat, el, bgeko gidhal, omo'rtal blu, girak lagan godan, eh, emsohfuli, by den, sel, dangalak, ra, eru, ngede, even, ngai marak, emla, moswe edhal, eh, C C M A, menggada, egal, ebal se. O'ngelue, mister president, egal, egal, go'ri, o, selaboni, ndirek, ngari, selwa, akle, tanganatro, bangela, oliri, tial status quo, dangar nyak, mo'udig, lo si ga, bebi la tial. E sel, dangalak, kringi, krisiela blu, mar'ad, ma government, le, la, gel, el momalida di, quadi, de, 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 wal. Ak direk, mister president, troaisho, waseng, aige gidhe, tel etal, ngamla, gukmo'la, tanganal, minister, el bu'ul sadang, girer aige gid, togora P U C, ma pension plan, qale, bay lungil, deba'emi, lo, lo, mo'k, bol mu'ter, sel regil, eh, ganga, direk, sel, bol meri, gukmo'la, mister president, aurele, eng, lo mu'ter, mer, olbi la bluulau, memla, ngai. Seegidal time, ensi, ulo meso, waseng, se edhal, omes, waseng, qadgo ngai, qadu dia. Li seye, mister president, a, a ulm, akmo, momol, mer, support, sel, mer posisi, ngara ulera, a, S T one, mer, di lamla, kengi. Le, ulm, ram, seegidal, continuing budget authority, di, mle, lo bangela, gel, tiga, minister, waseng, aigad gidhal, tablool, tagoi, bekal, bekal, bol sis, le, meri la, aurior. Bak direk, lo ngito, mister president, waseng, aigal, ngasun, gidha, lo si, a, ngasun, meri blu, mar'ad. Nda kadi, meri, a, government operations. Direk, tratog, mister president, sa, segal, aigal, loan, a, do'lay, ye olab, ol, tau'tau'ror, ye olab, ol, mongatmo'k, le, emorgong, bgeko gidhal. Nda kadi, do, ndi kadi, dungulme, tsika, go, meri, la, a, a uli, bo'la, bo'la, ar uli, de, don qadring. Mang, a, omes, se gid, by investment, rather than mal blal. Bol mu'ta, mo'klo, gombali, ngasel belau, ma ekre'el belau, mesel, orur, ta shobarti, they run on credit, le, to'ur, sel tial udawdaw, mang, qarur, mer, meri wekla. Bakbo, o, meri, ngasule, mer tial, te'lega, mister president, te'balol, mer, ngar seegid, mer go'tel, posisi, ngara ulera, ngar sel, continuing budget authority. Sula, mister president.
Sula, senator, senator Inabo.
Mister president, amam, sula, na, tele, mo, amet, dangal, girer tial, senet bill. Eh, mister president, ndiswalo, aisak, la, say, um, omes, sel, audited financial report, tra, civil service pension plan, F Y twenty nineteen, eh, mister president, eh, pension plan, in kam, ringi, amle seven point two million. Aige, la kaletra, employers, ma, ma employees, seven point two million, eh, mister president. Ye, investment, in kam, ringi, amle one million. Masel domes, ringi, eh, a pension plan, a ultungi, eight point two million. Aige, benefits, blel payout, eh, mister president, a nine point nine million. Ye, engmo, mo'da, ngara administrative cost, ringi, el five hundred thousand, ma, aige, total, el blel paya pension plan, a ten point five million, eh, mister president. Mang, sel domes, aige, let move, ludawdaw, a pension plan, ma, gel, luto, ludawdaw, eng, le, minus three point two million. Minus three point two million, eh, mister president. Mang, a government, ulang se, ora, pension plan, ra one point four million, luto, appropriation, samay, a bebi, a gel, mal, month, revenue, meri pension plan. Mister president, mang, tial pension plan, al noa loan, a government, amosubsidize, a pension plan, el manggadar, sel loan, bal sel, a national government. Le pension plan, a bekal, enough, udawdaw, lo'tu. Mang, hmm, sel, do'ul, waseng, tial pension plan, sap il noa loan, ndeak, meri, ng government, belau, amler, loan, le, indirectly, aige, da, subsidize, a pension plan, mang, mosab, el paya, guil, benefits, e paya, guil, expenses, ringi. Mang, a uli, mister president, qadu, qadu, mes, tial revenue source, el qulwa, say, qadu, al takadwa, say, hmm, di, kaba, hmm, aige, separate, a loan, mang, gira, do, mes, separate, ndi, gira, appropriation, luto, olbi la bluulau, meri, kal, entities, mang, mosab, el paya, loan, certi. Eh, a uli, mister president, qadu, ulto, der sel, one point six million, el appropriation, ma P P U C. Amo, manggadar, sel, a loaner, A D B, a loaner, a koror, I rise, were, project, el twenty eight million, one point six million, a payment, tercera, tara. Eh, aige, da, amla, uli, tra P U C, mang, modhe kal, longri, la bebi la blal. Ma, kias flor, ngi, a, adirek, al, al strain, der, el, covid nineteen. Mang, alsum, ma P P U C, a, ngua, apes, a loan, a, al ten million. Nda kudangali, abangal, waseng, magarangal, evaluay, tatal, P U C, el dulas, in enough, udawdaw, ringi, el paya, a, apes, blal. Ling, right now, all these years, e qadu, appropriate, a one point six million, a ma P P U C, ra bekarak, el manggadar, tial, bal sel, el twenty eight million. El asum, qadal, mu'tel, noa, ten million alone, eng, gidhal, al mu'tel, mo, appropriate, a mu'tel, batogora, one point six million, mosab, el cover a payment, tra additional, ten million alone. Mang, aigar, rogu, blal, adi, bal sel, a national government, gidha, gidhal, lo si, ga udawdaw, almo, manggada, aigar rogu. Plus, eh, mister president, eh, aige, tial, ldiral, two mil sa'ad, arabisi, isil, girer, mle, era, twenty some million alone. Masel domes, la, ndi, tarra, ge, lamu, ngalak, radar, ten million, a bal set. Mang, se edhal, waseng, qadu, mes, ra, aigal, loan, waseng, investment. Investment, eh, mister president, alsum, mo'generate, apes, a revenue. Sel, omolar, a loan, em investor, ngi, em, bol generate, apes, a revenue, seegid, kasam, waseng, investment. Aige, investment, al dimo, manggada, abel set, al gidha, sawad, al mo'y, tra bekl seals. Ndi, way, omua, a loan, a rapang, alme, manggada, bal semra, denki, o, ma'ra, galim, ndeak, ndeak, investment, dimo, manggada, expenses, ra, ra, bekl seals. Al, asum, investment, qadu, ul, marulyas, shobai, lo, ngariya, apes, a revenue, lo'tur, ngi. So, kloa, difference, sel, do'ul, waseng, aigal, a loan, a bodolai, over a hundred fifteen million. Wow, ndeak, aigamal, batogol udawdaw, mister president, sel bododa, aigal, existing, a budget.
I'm here to talk to you. And I want to say something. Suddenly cut. Suddenly cut. But I want to say again, Mr. President, we will not reject the House. I want to say again, Mr. President.
Senator Chin, a senator reply.
So, the President will listen to you. We will listen to the senators. The President said that he would return to the House. He said that he would continue the resolution. At the time, he said that the President would do all the work that he has done. He said that he would do it by doing a few things. He said that if the funds were not used properly, he would not have the money. He said that he would not have the money. At the time, the virus was on the way. He said that it was unusual. He said that if he had the money, he would have taken it and run it. He said that if he had the money, he would have taken it. He said that he would have taken it. He said that it is not possible to understand what he is saying. It is not possible to understand. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. At the time, the President said that he would cut 105%. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that he would have cut 80%. He said that he would have cut 80%. He said that he would have cut 80%. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, the President would have cut the state. At the time, he said that he would have cut 15%. He said that less than 10,000 state employees would have been cut. He said that if he had the state, he would have cut the revenue of tourism. He said that if he had the state, he would have cut the tourism revenue. He said that if he had the state, he would have cut the state. He said that if he had the state, he would have cut the state. He said that if he had the state, he would have cut the state. He said that he would have cut 15% of the state. He said that if he had the state, he would have cut the state. He said that if he had the state, he would have cut the state. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the GDP.
Senator Senior.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. I'm here to talk to the senators. Mr. President, I have three points. I want to talk about the Senate Bill Number 10-181. It is the one HD one. I want to talk about the issue that has been raised by the House of Delegates. He said that if he had the opinion of the Senate Legal Counsel, he said that if he had the opinion of the Senate Legal Counsel, he would have talked about it. He said that the House of Legal Counsel is not able to accept it. He said that if he had the opinion of the continuing budget authority of the President, he said that if he had the argument of the House of Delegates, he would have talked about it. He said that if he had the money, he would have talked about it or amended any part of it. He said that he would have talked about it. He said that the legal opinion of the Senate Legal Counsel was made in 1998. He said that if the Supreme Court did not approve the bill, he would have approved the appropriate funds. He said that if he had the money, he would have approved the appropriate funds. He said that if he had the money, he would have approved the appropriate funds. He said that if he had the decision made before, he would have approved it. He said that if he had the executive branch, he would have approved the bill. He said that if he had the money, he would have approved the bill. He said that if he had the money, he would have approved the bill. He said that if he had the money, he would have approved the bill. He said that if he had the money, he would have approved the bill. He said that if he had the money, he would have approved the bill. He said that if he had the money, he would have approved the bill. He said that if he had the money, he would have approved the bill. He said that if he had the money, he would have approved the bill. He said that if he had the money, he would have approved the bill. He said that if he had the money, he would have approved the bill. Number two point, I want to talk about the policy issues. He said that if he had the money, he had 25 years since independence. That's a fact. 1994, he was born. On October 1, he was born in 2026. 25 years of independence. He said that if he had the money, he would have run the government. He said that if he had the money, he would have returned every year. He said that if he had the money, he would have returned every year. He said that if he had the money, he would have returned every year. He said that if he had the money, he would have returned every year. He said that if he had the money, he would have returned every year. He said that if he had the money, he would have returned every year. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenditures. Cutting expenditures of the government. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenditures. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenditures. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenditures. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenditures. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenditures. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenditures. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenditures. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenditures. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenditures. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenditures. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenditures. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenditures. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenditures. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenditures. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenditures. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenditures. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenditures. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenditures. Finally, he said that the chairman of the State Department said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. We need to cut our expenditure levels. He said that if he had the money, he would have understood our governors and colleagues of the House of Delegates. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money,
Senator Senior, Senator Mario.
Mr. President, I want to talk about the issue. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses.
Chairman Rodim.
Mr. President, I want to talk about the issue. I want to talk about the rejection of the bill. The one. Mr. President, I want to talk to the Minister of Finance. I want to talk about July 41. July 41 after July 14, 1900. The annual budget bill. Mr. President, I want to talk about the issue. I want to talk about the understanding of the pensioners. The RPL is $3 million. At the time, 3.8 is reported by the government. It is a benefit for pensioners. Mr. President, I want to talk about the support of the members of the House. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. Mr. President, I want to talk about the issue. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the private sector. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. Mr. President, I want to talk about the differences between the House. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses. He said that if he had the money, he would have cut the expenses.
Mr. President. Senator. Senator Mario. He said that if he had the money, he would have talked about it. He said that if he had the money, he would have talked about it. He said that if he had the money, he would have talked about it. He said that if he had the money, he would have talked about it. He said that if he had the money, he would have talked about it. He said that if he had the money, he would have talked about it. He said that if he had the money, he would have talked about it. He said that if he had the money, he would have talked about it. A pension plan. Boo.
Mr. President. Mr. President, I want to talk.
Mr. Mario?
No.
President Marco Blaurodim?
No.
President Hoconspaulis? President Hoconspaulis? President Asenkyo, four yes, eight no.
Four yes, eight no. Certices. We don't have session, we give the order. Lord Leader.
President, I don't know if you have a conference. Conference budget?
The budget bill, but I support Chairman Marco Roudim and Chairman Humphrey. And he will make a decision on the House. Lord Leader.
President, the resolution calendar. Can I have a certices?
Certices. Session. Lord Leader.
President, we suspend the calendar. The place is Senate Resolution 197. The 10-202. The legal appointment. And the referral?
If the motion is approved, the government will approve it today. On top. Namai.
President, we suspend the calendar. But we will have House Resolution 169, 16S. The adoption.
If the motion is approved, the government will approve it today. On top. Namai. Lord Leader.
The clear government will have a title of resolution. The government will sign it.
Clear government title.
Senate Resolution Number 10-197. Senate Resolution Confirming the Presidential Appointment of Mr. Alain T. Marbo to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the Palau Visitors Authority for a term of two years. The Senate Resolution has approved the directorial election. The Mr. Alain T. Marbo is the head of the Board of Directors of Palau Visitors Authority. The president of the Senate Hoconspaulis by request. Senate Resolution Number 10-198. Senate Resolution Confirming the Presidential Reappointment of Mr. Ralph Moses to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the National Development Bank of Palau for a term of three years. The resolution has approved the directorial election. The Mr. Ralph Moses is the head of the Board of Directors of NDBP. The head of the Edderaq. The president of the Senate Hoconspaulis by request. Senate Resolution Number 10-199. Senate Resolution Confirming the Presidential Reappointment of Mr. Drotio Nagata to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the National Development Bank of Palau for a term of three years. The resolution has approved the directorial election. The Mr. Drotio Nagata is the head of the Board of Directors of NDBP. The head of the Edderaq. The president of the Senate Hoconspaulis by request. Senate Resolution Number 10-208. Senate Resolution Confirming the Presidential Reappointment of Ms. Nancy Wong to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the National Development Bank of Palau for a term of three years. The resolution has approved the directorial election. The Ms. Nancy Wong is the head of the Board of Directors of NDBP. The head of the Edderaq. The president of the Senate Hoconspaulis by request. Senate Resolution Number 10-201. Senate Resolution Confirming the Presidential Appointment of Mr. Leslie Gibbons Teewid to serve as a member of the Palau Election Commission for a term of four years. The resolution has approved the directorial election. The Mr. Leslie Gibbons Teewid is the head of the Palau Election Commission. The head of the Awaraq. The president of the Senate Hoconspaulis by request. Senate Resolution Number 10-202. Senate Resolution Confirming the Presidential Reappointment of Ms. Aberdeen Raabei to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the National Development Bank of Palau for a term of three years. The resolution has approved the directorial election. The Ms. Aberdeen Raabei is the head of the Board of Directors of NDBP. The head of the Edderaq. The president of the Senate Hoconspaulis by request.
The appointment of Palau Visitors Authority Chairman Chin. Chairman Tourism. The appointment of Leslie Teewid. The election commission is Chairman Mario. The confirming of the appointment of Aberdeen Raabei. The Development Bank is Chairman Niree Bangla. Lord Leader.
I get four more of Bangla. Development Bangla.
Why say?
I get wrong with Bangla. Okay.
Senator Mario.
President, I get the title of resolution. It's assigned to the committee. But the adoption, we adopt the House Joint Resolution 10-69-16S.
Are you coming? Yeah. Lord Leader, come, go to the small.
President, the House Resolution has approved the President Mousaw. The Ministry of Finance and Ministry of MPIC. Public Infrastructure Industry and Commerce. The world prioritize the immediate action. The exploration is to go. The history of the president has been resolved. The adapter in the Senate was adopted in August 2018. And the president. And the resolution is approved. And the chairman decided to adopt it. The president is the one who is going to do that. The resolution of the president. The government will approve it.
So many things. The government will approve the resolution today. On top. Namai. Lord Leader.
President, I get the resolution calendar. For item 13, introduction of bills. Item 14, introduction of resolutions. And for Miss Lennys Communication. The calendar of Miss Lennys Communication. The note is 10-966. The 10-968. And the business of Miss Lennys, item 16.
Business of Senator Inabo.
Mr. President, I am Missulang. I am Miss Lennys Business. The business of Miss Kham, 10-967. Mr. President, the resolution of Olbi. Orior. 11th quarter state legislature. The last year, the budget was 30. FY 2020, 2021, 2022. Mr. President, the 25 million dollars. But the government is going to grant Olbi. It's 25 million dollars. And so we are going to say. Olbi orior is going to be approved. The appropriate is 25 years. The president, the national government is going to approve it. And the government is going to approve it. The continue of the approval. And the continue employment. To equalize the state. Mr. President, the serious longage. The old people. But the message is available. And we are going to approve it. The government will approve it. Mr. President, the last year, the assignment. Resolution or old people. The old people. The longage, Mr. President, seriously. The government is going to approve it. The old people. The longage. The government is going to approve it. The president, the president. The president. The issue is before. The August 27, 2020. The 62 million. 62.9 million. The compact of free association funding. The FSM. The FY 2021. Mr. President, the 15 million is approved. The 62 million. But the government is going to approve it. The committee is negotiating the compact. The government is going to approve it. 15 million is 25 years ago. 10 years ago. 5 years ago. The inflation is 25 years. The terms of the compact. The financial review. Economic review. But the government is saying. But Mr. President, the government is saying. The justify until the money is approved. The military is approved. The military is approved. But the president, I am Missulang.
The chairman of the Senate. The chairman of the Senate. The 1 million is approved. The employee is approved. The chairman of the Senate. The compact is approved. The chairman of the A.G.G.A. Mario. The oversight is the president. Senator Clay.
Sorry, President. The president is saying August 29. And I am Missle. Long Dibra, Palis. The organizer is Pamela Kalu. The one who is entertaining. The performer is Louis Kalu. President, although I mentioned. The senator is saying. 8,000,000 people are dead. 1,000,000. The government is saying. The safety is important. I am Missle. The president is saying. The government is saying. The president is saying. The government is saying. The president is saying. The award is. The stepping stone of the Hall of Fame. The talented boy. The president, I mentioned. The message is. The message is upset. Medical referral. The next speaker. The hospital is upset. Patient escort. The harrow is. Escort, I understand. But escort, I understand. But now patient based. But the program is harrow. The patient is. I am Missle. The patient is. But the president is saying. The appropriate is. The syrup is. I am Missle. But the government is saying. I am Missle. The people are. But I mentioned. The message is. The ice is. The people are. The matson is resumed operation. The people are delivering cargo. The highway is. The president. The president, the last mention. The government is saying. The social media. But the government is saying. The staff is saying. The information is confirmed. The message is. The president is saying. The social media. The information is disseminated. Thousands and thousands. The people are. The president is saying. The other people. The receive information. The people are claiming. The Trump is fake news. The president is saying.
Senator, can you clarify? The social media. The Senate.
President, the. The visitor is. The people are. The people are. But the simple. The doctor is visiting. The government is saying. The government is saying. The COVID. The. The close together. But the. The. The government is saying. The example. Simple. The social media. The affectment. The decision. The people are. The people are. But the government is saying. Sir, the president.
Senator. Ray. The government is saying. The COVID. The people are. The government is saying. The Emre. The ultra emergency announcement. But the government is saying. The senator is saying. The constituent is saying. Senator Senior.
Madam Siratyal, Mr. President. I am Missel. The president. I congratulate the team of the immune team for winning the championship. The president is saying. The president. The staff. The champion of the Arab. Again. Number two, Mr. President. The frontliners. Frontliners. The government is saying. The COVID. The president is saying. The mask. The get together as a family. The reunion. The people are. The people are. The closed down. The people are. The people are. The people are. The family. The front line. The COVID pandemic. Finally, Mr. President. Number three, Mr. President. The medical referral. The complaint. The president. The dispersment. The benefits. The medical referral. National health insurance. The complaint. The front payment. The NHI. But irregularities. The complaint. The senator. The appropriate is. The medical. There is even some recommendation. The disappointment. The mechanism. The privatizer. The medical insurance company with expertise. The. The question has been brought up. The other people. The healthcare financing system in the few months. The. The immediate response. The situation. The immediate response. The situation. The people are. The people are. The. The. The problem. The medical professional. The people are. Bring that up. The government is saying. The old people. NHI, healthcare financing. The service. The other people. The president.
Did you? So many things. Lord Leader. The hospital. The hospital. The. The face. The. The. The essential services. The neglect. The. 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 The complaint. The senator. The hospital. Lord Leader.
President, the hospital. The complaint. The. The hospital. The. The. The president. The management. The. 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 The hospital. The. The. The medical referral hospital. The insurance. The. 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 The president.
The Senator Mario. The. The. The insurance. 5,000,000. The. The. The insurance. The. Yes, I have received a real study. 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 October. Senator Korte.
Yes, the President has ordered the other hospital, other healthcare fund. The process, in my estimation, is perfect and the problem. It's the implementation of the process. Yes, the medical referral, make a medical decision. Yes, the medical decision. And the healthcare fund is refused. Yes, other qualifies. Yes, the chairman. It is compounded by factors. But the priority is. Yes, the president has received a message. Yes, I have received a message. Yes, I have received a message. Yes, I have received a meeting. Yes, I have received a meeting. Yes, I have received a message. Yes, I have received a message. Yes, understand the process. Yes, I have received a message. Yes, mixed messages. Yes, I have received a message. Yes, freely move around. And access healthcare all the time. Yes, I have received a message. Yes, I have received a message. Yes, step back from the situation. Yes, I have received a message. Yes, I have received a message.
Yes, Senator Korte. Senator Mario.
Yes, I have received an announcement.
An announcement. Senator Mario.
Yes, I have received a message. Yes, I have received a message. Yes, I have received a message. Yes, September 17. Yes, I have received a message. 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 Yes, legal recent activities. Militaryism. Yes, I have received a message. Yes, I have received a message. Yes, I have received a message. Yes, I have received a message.
Yes, Senator Inabo and Senator Mario.
Yes, I have received a message. Yes, I have received a message. Yes, I have received a financial review. Yes, I have received a message. 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 Yes, September 17, 2 o'clock. Yes, I have received a message.
Yes.
Yes, I have approved it. Yes, I have approved it.
Yes, I have approved it.